Let's call a special meeting, the township board of trustees for Thursday, January 22nd, 2015 at 6:00 PM quarter. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Adoption of agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as spread.
Motion by trustee Churchy, supported by trustee Boyd. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion carries. Public comment? Any public comment at this time? No public comment. New business. Employee healthcare coverage. Mr. Mueller, thanks for coming this evening. Appreciate it, once again. Would you like to introduce yourself?
My name is Mike Mueller.
Could pull everybody up, sir.
Is it on?
I guess so.
My name's Mike Mueller, Representative TMR Insurance Agency.
Thank you, Mr. Mueller. Mr. Mueller has provided us with the up-to-date figures. I know there was a couple of miscalculations, and them have all been corrected. So we should have all the comparables on the medical cost analysis chart now.
Correct.
And the healthcare rate plan comparisons. In having the last meeting with the employees to inform the employees of what our new coverage... I'm sorry. To inform the employees of their new coverage, and I believe we had so many days that we had to inform them by, and we have a due date when we have to initiate this new plan, correct?
Correct.
We had to inform our employees of this new coverage and what exactly it encompassed, and at that time, there was a lot of questions and dissatisfaction with the plan, I guess I should say. So that's why we're here tonight to address this. I think after looking at other options, I'm going to speak for myself first. I think we were very close to the mark, but I think we missed it slightly. And I think there's one thing that we can do with very little cost adjustment to the township. But I'd like to hear where we need to go from here. That's my feelings personally. On the advice of Steve Jopik, did you get an email from him?
No, I did not.
That's how he's saying we have to go about it. It can't be done. I follow that. Alright, I'll make a motion to reconsider the board's prior approval at this time regarding our insurance. Well, on behalf of those that take it, I think it is something worth at least a little bit of discussion, so I will second it then. Motion by Supervisor Trombley, seconded by trustee Boyd. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Post. Motion carries.
Maybe we could just have Mike go through a couple scenarios of what we had, what we chose, and what we're considering, how they compare. Plain English, I just don't have it out of my head.
Okay.
Yeah, maybe in English, how each service compares in each.
Sure, would you like me to start with the current plan or the plan that was approved in the previous meeting, or where would you like me to start?
I just think if I just kind of go across and say, okay, if you were to go to your doctor, this is how much it would have been on the old plan, this is how much it'd cost on the new. And just kind of give a roundabout comparison so we can all get a clear picture of what would be. Thanks.
Well, there is a comparison sheet here. I will go through it. For instance, in your current plan, you're going to see, let's start from the top down, an estimated annual premium of $166,000 approximately, which is fairly expensive compared to the options I've provided. But in an instance where you were to be hospitalized, inpatient or outpatient, the individual would be responsible for 750 of the $1,500 deductible, because there's an HRA vehicle in place where the township's responsible for the other 750. So it is a fairly rich plan as a deductible goes. And then after you reach your total deductible, you'll pay 20% of the medical bill until you reach your out-of-pocket maximum, where you reach your out-of-pocket maximum, the insurance company will pay 100% after that. But in case you go to an office visit, you're paying $20. A specialty visit is $20. An urgent care visit, $60. Peripractic visits, $20. An emergency room is $150. If you need prescription drugs right now, generic is $5, brand is $4, and specialty drugs, $8. Those are co-pays. So those are one-time payments. Those don't go towards your deductible or your coinsurance. It's just one-time payments. Moving on to the plan directly adjacent to it, HAP PPO Silver 1, 2000. That has no vehicle. By vehicle, I mean an HRA or an HSA. Two completely different vehicles. It's a straight fully insured plan. But you do have a $2,000 deductible for an individual. If you go to the hospital, inpatient or outpatient, you'll have to pay that $2,000 out of your pocket first before the insurance company will start paying. After you reach that, you'll pay 20%, up to $6,000 for an individual, $12,000 for a family. After you reach your out-of-pocket max, at that time, the insurance company will pay 100%. This plan also has co-pays, just like the last plan, slightly higher. $200 for an emergency visit, $65 for urgent care, $30 for office visit and chiro visit, $50 for a specialty visit, and $20 for a generic drug, $60 for a brand, and 50% of the specialty drug. But where the kicker is here is that it saves the township approximately $42,000 from your current plan. Making those little adjustments in the plan has significant benefits to the township. And that's one of our main goals was at the renewal to help the township save money from the current plan. And the plan current, adjacent to that is PPO Silver 2, 2000. So it's very, very similar to the Silver 1, and this is the Silver 2. All the deductibles are the same. The out-of-pocket expense is 6,600 instead of 6,000. The emergency room is the same. Urgent care is the same. The office visit and chiro visits are $40 instead of $30. Specialty visit, $60 instead of $50. But the generic drug is 15 instead of 20. Brand is 50 instead of 60, and specialty is still 50%. Because of the slightly modified co-pays, there will be another $3,000 in annual savings for that plan at a total of $120,925. Directly adjacent to that plan is currently the approved plan. It is a HAP, HSA, PPO Silver. HSA is a vehicle called the Health Savings Account. In the last meeting, I'm not sure that everybody that was involved in the plan completely understood what a Health Savings Account was. And I believe that's a lot of the reason why we had a meeting to reconsider a plan, because although the savings is very significant, and about $50,000 approximately from the current plan, there is a tremendous out-of-pocket expense for all the subscribers on the plan, which very likely cannot be affordable to your everyday citizen. There is a $2,000, $4,000 deductible, but there's no co-pays. And there's no co-pays for prescription drugs. There's no co-pays for office visits. There's no co-pays for emergency room. There's no co-pays for anything. So if you're an individual, if you want to go to the doctor for prescription drugs, physician, you have to pay everything, the total bill, until you reach $2,000 for an individual or $4,000 for a family. And after you reach that, then you have to pay 20% of the medical bill until it reaches $5,000 for an individual, $10,000 for a family. And then after that, the insurance company covers 100%. So that one is a lot more out-of-pocket for the subscriber as far as going to your office visits, your prescription drug, co-pays. So you're a lot more out-of-pocket with that plan. But it does show in the savings there. But I think we have established the meaning of a Health Savings Account within all the employees on the plan. Therefore, I'd like to turn it back to you guys, and I'll let you go from there.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you.
And a couple of things that I've learned about the HSAs in the last few days. I actually have an HSA, and I have not had any problems with it. I did a little bit more research on it because I've used it, and I didn't think the payments that I was making to the doctor were absorbing. The way that it was explained is if you went to the doctor for an office call, and they charge you $100, and that's what they're going to charge the provider to go to the doctor. And then the insurance company comes back and says, well, our maximum that we're going to pay is only 75. That's what we allow. The 75 is what you would have to pay, not the 100 that the doctor was actually charging. Now, if you look at any of these other policies, you go to the doctor, you're still going to be paying $30 co-pay. So yes, there's a savings, but you're making that back up in the front end. So the HSA isn't as bad as everybody thinks it is. That's all I wanted to make sure, pretty new.
And Mike, is that the way this one works? Do you pay the actual, what the insurance company has negotiated?
Right, I mean, there is a negotiated discount, but it's minimal. I mean, like, say if you went to the doctor four times, you're going to be paying $75. Four times, that adds up a lot more than $30 four times. And if they send you from there to get x-rays, or they find something else, and they send you, they say, okay, you need all these prescriptions now. That is more money out of your pocket. That's not co-pays there either. So that's, say they want a prescription, they want to put you on a prescription for $200. I mean, you're not, instead of paying the $20 generic, you know, it all depends on the circumstance of what happens, if it's an illness or a sick, I mean, I'm sorry, illness or accident. So it's all really dependent on individual situations. I would say that it's definitely less out-of-pocket not to take the HSA if you're looking that way, especially if you're not funding a savings account. You know, if you're just using a dead vehicle, so to speak, and you're not putting money aside to it. That's what it's there for, that's what it's meant for. So in case of an accident, down the line, or a sickness, you have that account built up, and you use that money for the bills that come in until it helps you hit your deductible. So after you hit your deductible, the insurance company helps you pay that money and starts contributing towards the medical bills. So I would say that if you're contributing towards an HSA, that'd be the way it's supposed to be used.
When we approved this, so the audience knows, me personally, I didn't realize, I didn't understand the $2,000 and $4,000 had to be paid by the employee before the insurance technically kicked in. For lack of a better way of explaining it. They had to pay that $2,000 or $4,000 before the insurance actually even kicked in.
Correct.
Considering that our employees haven't had a raise in a long time, that's kind of a big hardship for them because we're not huge payers here. So that's really the only reason that I would reconsider this. Jody did some work, and she showed it to me the other day. The difference between what we have, what we approved, the HSA, and the Silver 2, which would eliminate them having to pay that $2,000 and $4,000, the cost to us, the township, Jody compared me from around $1,719 increase, which in my opinion is very much worth it for our employees to not have to pay that $2,000 and $4,000. And that's where the Silver 2. So that's actually the one that I'm leaning towards. Can I ask you a recommendation between the Silver 1 and the Silver 2 for the money? Because they are so close in cost, and we are looking at a small increase for the employee. And what we're dealing with employee-wise is our employees trying to keep as much in pocket as they can. We're on a four-day work week here for most of our employees, and that was the concern that was raised in that meeting that we had. So between the one and the two, recommendation-wise for keeping the most in pocket?
Yeah, I would just have to say that you have, you know, figure out if more people are going to go to the office, or more people are going to take prescription drugs, because prescription drugs are less, yeah, but the office visits more. So any out-of-pocket is a little more with the two. My recommendation, if you were already looking to save money, and one of the major reasons you wanted the HSA, probably the Silver 2.
Just for money's sake.
And without, and you still have co-pays for people I think that would satisfy some people not having to pay the total physician bill or the total prescription drug. And then have those co-pays still, and you'll still have, you know, $46,000 savings approximately from your current plan. I think that's terrific.
And that's actually been the hardest part, is employees want to be involved with the decision-making. But just like you said, some employees want better prescription coverage, other employees want better office visit cover, some want chiropractors, some don't care about chiropractor. It's impossible to make everybody happy.
Correct.
So in my view, find the middle ground in where we're going to save substantial amount of money for our residents, because ultimately, they're the ones that have to pay this. The feedback that I received was out-of-pocket. I don't know if any of the employees want to speak here tonight, but the feedback they received was they're out-of-pocket, and what they were spending was their main concern, not so much what they're getting, but how much their insurance would cost when they had to use it.
The thing was, we were trying to, Jody was doing like a comparison of how much comes out of our check each paid to compared to what we would be spending on this, you know, on health. So after Cam speaks, I'd like Jody, if she could address that, to see how that changes. You know, because there's certain, you know, certain ones that I can't even afford it coming on my check. Oh, the township money, and that's already paying my 20%, so if we can look at that.
Cam?
Yeah, you wanted to know, you would ask basically how this affects some of us. I mean, going from our current plan to what you are looking at, I'm going to reach my maximum out-of-pocket every year because of what the coverage is. So I mean, in a nutshell, I'm looking at a $6,000 head a year. You're saving money, but I'm losing it to the point I don't know how I'm going to survive. You know, I've worked in two different capacities for this township for 20 and 20-plus years. This is very discouraging. It's, you know, like you mentioned, we only have a four-day work week. But some of us have been here for a very long time, but very dedicated and loyal to the residents. And I believe some of us try very, very hard to do what's right by the residents. At some point, the residents have to help the people that are trying to work for them. I realize the costs are out of control, but don't put it on our backs as well. Everybody's struggling. Like you had mentioned, how many years we've had zero raises here, and everybody's kind of going along with it, trying to help the program. But this is really tough.
But isn't it, if you hit that $6,000, once you hit that, everything is covered after that?
That's what I'm being told, once you hit the $6,000 credits.
Well, and isn't it, for a family, it's just $4,000. You don't have to pay the four and two?
I'd have to look at, yeah, for the family, it's $4,000.
So it's not four plus, it's either $2,000 if you're single, or $4,000 if you're a family?
Correct.
Which is still...
We have to be more specific at what plan you're talking about also.
Well, the Silver 1 and 2.
The Silver 1, you have to pay if you're a family, $4,000. And then you pay 20% of your medical bill until you hit $12,000. And then it's covered at 100%.
And is that the same for the 2, Silver 2?
No, the 2 is $4,000 for a family. And this is if you go to the hospital, you're inpatient or outpatient. And this isn't for physicians and stuff. But yes, you pay $4,000, then you pay 20% of the medical bills until it reaches $13,200. And then it's 100%.
And between the 1 and the 2, there's a $600 out-of-pocket for...
Difference, yes.
Or for family, it'd be another...
$1,200.
$1,200. So I mean, them two are very close in total cost for plans. That's why I was leaning more towards the Silver 1. I know when we reviewed, that's a significant amount of money. Yes, the generic drug is $5 more, I believe, but the office visit is $10 cheaper, and the special visit is $10 cheaper. And we went from a platinum, skipped all the golds, and went to a silver. The only lower plans are a bronze, I think. That's the rock bottom.
Right.
So I think the intent to save money is truly there. We could still have substantial savings, huge savings.
One more thing I wanted to add is if there are prescription drugs that are at 50%, specialty, we can work with the doctors and, you know, whether it be Health Alliance Plan, and see if there is some type of drug that can be tried, if it's a comparable. And if it doesn't work for that individual, there is a possibility in some circumstances that they can treat it as a brand. Not in every circumstance, but in some circumstances, they will try to work with your doctor to find a drug where you don't have to pay the 50% specialty. So I just wanted to mention that too.
But with the HAP HSA that we did pick at first, that's the one where the person would have to pay the first $2,000?
Or $4,000 for family.
Or $4,000 for family.
Right, for anything that is medically related.
So basically, it's like your insurance really doesn't even kick in until after you hit that.
Exactly.
Okay, versus, because I'm looking at that compared to the HAP Silver, and the comparables are very close. That with the HAP Silver 1, the out-of-pocket is higher versus the one we chose?
Yeah, $1,000 more.
So it's like, I don't know why that was...
With the HSA, the cost is more to the township.
That's only if we're... These are all packaged, they're all packaged plans by them.
But if we were feeding into $2,000.
Right. I mean, you used to be able to pick your co-pays, your prescriptions, and swap deductibles. But with healthcare reform, they have metal level plans. Now they're all packaged together, so you have to choose one of their packages. You can't swap co-pays, swap prescription drug cards, or swap deductibles or out-of-pocket expenses. Like, you used to be able to build your own plan, and now with groups under 50, they give you metal levels, and they give you a certain number of plans with certain deductibles. And that's how they make you choose from, unfortunately.
Just like everything else, we have to look at the big picture. An example is our last fiscal year, we spent $85,000 more than we brought in. We're taking money from the township's rainy day fund every year since, from 2010 to 2014, I think it was, we've spent a quarter of a million dollars more. We've taken it out of our savings to balance our budget. And, you know, it looks like, you know, what's the big deal with the $3,000 difference? But if you do that with 50 different things throughout the year, that's why we keep spending our rainy day fund. If we keep going at the rate we are, township's going to be broke in about 25 years. Broke.
What's our rainy day fund? I don't understand. We have a pine tree acres, a PTA fund.
And even with that money coming in, that $85,000 that we lost last year, that includes the pine tree acres fund.
That fund has always been used to offset the general fund.
I understand that, but the point is, the point is, we're spending more than we're bringing in. We're going to be broke. The township is going to be broke in about 25 years. And that sounds like a long ways off. I know I won't be sitting up here in 25 years, but my kids are grandkids' money. So I look that far ahead, and, you know, it's easy to say, a couple thousand dollars here and there, it's not a big deal. But it is, it adds up, and it adds up fast. I'm just saying, we need to consider all that. A quarter of a million dollars in five years over budget, that's a lot of money, a lot of money.
And there's a difference between operating expense and capital expense. You put money into a building, you put money into the park, that's all capital. But this kind of stuff, along with the other benefits that the employees are getting, which I guess a lot of them don't even realize, you know, that they're getting, those are all operating expenses, and it's no different than us at home. The bills that are coming in are more than what we're bringing in, and then you have to stop and think, now, wait a minute, I'm taking money out of the savings account to pay the Edison bill, I have a problem, I have to cut back on something else, whether it's going out to dinner or whatever. Well, we have to do the same thing here, and it's an operating expense. This is an operating expense. The deferred comp and the paid holidays and the vacation time, those are all operating expenses. There's nothing tangible left when those are gone, when they're used up. There's nothing tangible left when those are gone, when they're used up. I did a little bit of, just so that everyone knows what the benefit packages are. There's, in 2015, there is 10 paid vacations, paid holidays that we pay out, and that runs about $8,900 a year for those 10. Last year, there was 12. The vacation time is about $12,000 a year. And the deferred comp that we're paying out is about $9,000 a year. And then this insurance is roughly, and I use the, what we're using, what we have right now, it's about $140,000. So the benefit package totally is about $170,000 a year out of our budget, so... That's why we're looking where we can trim costs.
And every dollar matters. And, you know, the, the point of, and I hate to, sometimes I feel like I'm being the bad guy saying things like this. Cam has a good point with, it's only a four-day work week here. And that doesn't work with me though, because up until two years ago, I had three jobs. Now I have two. And, and when I had the three jobs, I was working 72 hours at one job, EMS, and 40 hours at the youth home, plus this. So, you know, and not to sound brash or anything, but if you can't afford what's in front of you, you might have to get a second job. I do it, and my wife works. You do what you have to do. And I understand, it is tough out there, it is, for everybody. There's just not a lot of high-paying jobs out there anymore. But our job up here, sitting at this board, is how can we save the residents' money, first? And yes, we do have to take care of employees also, and I do understand that. But we have to look at the big picture.
That's easy to say when there's more than one person bringing money in. If there's only one person in the home, maybe...
But you, ma'am, I, I do, I understand that.
You speak it though, I do leave a few... I don't want any more from the audience, if you would, please come up to the mic.
And, and I agree, the HSA, that's too much. And if I, if I realized then it was $2,000 or $4,000 out-of-pocket, I wouldn't have voted for it. That was a miscommunication or misunderstanding. And I think all the woodboard's part, I don't think anybody realized that at the time.
Looking at the, the different columns, the people that are here that do take the insurance, what do you think about the different ones offered? Because we're considering the one. I mean, it affects me too, because I'm, I'm on it, but I'd like to know what, what one you guys think is feasible with your situations. I mean, I'm like, like Chris, I'm working three jobs too, so I know it's tough out there, you know?
But everybody's helping?
Yeah, everybody's doing something for it, but like I said, I just kinda like hear what different eyes, looking at the different columns, what you think.
Well, I can only speak for myself, you know? The part that's really hurting me is the prescription coverage. And I realize that, and I understand what Chris said earlier. You can't tailor because of what individual needs are. I understand that. But that's what's gonna hurt me the worst. And because of only, because of the medication that we need to purchase, there's only 50% coverage, it still runs my out-of-pocket out of sight. Now, with that being said, you know, you know, fixed costs, you cannot, you know, those you can somewhat control and, and plan for, it's the uncontrolled costs where you're dishing all the money upfront, or you're... How do you plan for that? When here, you know, yeah, we're on a short week, you're trying to work multiple jobs. I mean, just, you know, I realize everybody's having a hard time. Do you realize what kind of added stress this puts on everybody? Knowing that that's a kind of, kind of hill they're gonna have to climb every year?
Well, what do you think, Cam, of the silver one? I mean, how does that...
I mean, it seems, you know, with the copays, it seems so much consistent with what we're coming from. Yeah, the out-of-pockets, you know, are harsh. You know, without knowing, without having some kind of detailed summary on the, on what the plan's covers, it's hard for me to, to know exactly what it's probably are.
Well, looking at the renewal versus the half silver, our renewal, the out-of-pocket, is higher than what we're looking at.
Which silver are you looking at?
Um, in the orangey, or like the peach colored.
PPO silver one.
See, because you look across, that's out-of-pocket, $12,000 for family. The one we did have, or we still have, is 12, so...
Well, if you look at the silver two, the, the prescription drugs is actually cheaper under the silver two.
Five, you mean the generic $5 difference on the prescription drugs?
Preferred two is...
If you look at the whole, it's 20 in 15, 60 in 50, and 50%.
I think where the, where the savings is in the office visit, the specialist visit.
Right, but see, that's, that's the problem. That's why this is so tough, because that's true, but for Cam, the two is probably better. Because he's got to save out his prescriptions, and that's where his costs are coming in. And that's why this is so tough to do. That's, that's this board's struggle.
Honestly, because the prescription I'm referring to is considered a preferred specialty, it does not change, and that's why it's so expensive. It's only 50% coverage.
And both, the silver and the one and the two, correct?
Right.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I would look at doctor's visits, and then also the, the copays for the preferred brands or the generics. Because, you know, we all have insurance for when you need it, when you get sick. You don't wanna be faced with the fact of, I can't afford to go to the doctor, you're, you're trying to work, or you're not feeling well, or you're hurt. And that's just not, that's not a good situation. Not only for the township, or the employees that work with that person. So, I would probably lean more towards the, the better copays, towards office visits, or, or emergency room type stuff. They're really not that far apart.
They're not, the emergency, all of this stuff, the emergency room, all that stuff's the same. The only, the only cost difference, other than prescriptions, is office visit is $10 more, preventive care is $10 more.
And that'll be made up in the prescription costs.
Then, then your out-of-pocket, that you have to pay out of the paycheck every year, or every, every pay period. From the looks of it, from what I've seen, actually for the employees, it looks like the PPO silver two is the better deal. And to say it's touchy, boy.
Mike, can I, can I ask you, and this is just because of my situation? You had mentioned that sometimes these plans work a little bit better with the individual when they're dealing with a specialty?
Yeah, I understand that, if you're, if you're taking a specialty drug, not in every circumstance, but there are some circumstances where Health Alliance level work with your doctor, finding they're comparable. And there's not a comparable, if there is one and it doesn't work for that individual, there is certain circumstances where they can require authorization. The doctor, you know, says that this, this generic or this brand is not working, and he needs this specialty in some circumstances. They will give you the brand health aid. And you'd like to work to try and, try and get that approved. But I just want you to know that it's not guaranteed.
I understand that. I, my, my question though is, does one of these plans, do they work with you better with what's playing wrong? Or, no, it doesn't matter?
No, it's the same exact insurance company, same exact representatives. It's just how much is coming out of your pocket, how much is, if they're being planned. That's all about, it's the same exact people that are working with you.
I'm just, I'm running scenarios through my head, how this would work out. People that have prescriptions may pay for them every month. So every month, they're putting out that $15 or $20. I might go to the doctors twice a year, if that. And I know that's not everybody. And, and if I was looking at these two, by far, PPO silver two is the one I would pick. It just is. It's, it's savings all around, I believe, for the majority of the time, and the majority of the people. Even the prescriptions are cheaper. I mean, if somebody wants to correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, that's, that's the way that I see this.
Well, like I said earlier, it boils down to the office visit, the specialty visit, versus if you have to go to a lot of appointments, office appointments, there's the difference versus the drug difference.
Or if you take a lot of prescriptions, that's, that's the tough part. But most people go to the doctors once or twice a year. If you go to doctors twice a month, then yeah, it's not such a great deal. But if you're getting prescriptions all the time, going to the doctors once in a while, the two is a better deal, all around.
You guys are all looking at it out there, come on. Forever, hold your peace, if you're not gonna tell us now what you feel. Cam's standing up here telling us his situation, what works best for all of you.
Yeah, that's like, open discussion, you know, that was, how do you think about it? How does, because I agree with Chris, I think too, that's the way it looks.
We're cutting you a break on the HSA, I mean, we're taking that back, because we all feel that was a mistake, but, you know...
What HAP is doing is forcing its people, its members, to stay healthy and not go to the doctor. Yes, I know there's only a little bit in office visits and specialty visits, it's only $10. In the big scheme of things, $10 is not gonna make me or break me. What worries me is having to have an emergency where I have to go in the hospital for who knows how long, the $12,000 with the silver one, or the $13,200 with the silver two. We've been saving forever for retirement, and one good case of whatever, and I'm in the hospital, or my husband's in the hospital, and there goes part of our savings. It's not so much, I know I feel bad for Cam with the 50% on the prescription, but that doesn't change in either one of those policies. What does change is the maximum out-of-pocket, and that's the one that scares me.
But the hospitalization is still 80%, though?
Yes, where I would still be responsible for the 20%, so the 20% up to the maximum. Unless you get your maximum, for a family, is 13 on, on silver two.
Yeah, just like to clarify, I'm like, what, the half...
Hospitalization is covered 80 and 50 across the board.
With the half, with the half silver one and silver two, they're embedded deductibles. So if one person goes to the hospital, you're only paying the single deductible. And then the insurance company will help you pay. But if two people go, then you have to meet the whole deductible. Or three people go, then you start with the family. But if only one person goes in the hospital, the insurance company will start paying after $2,000. They're not gonna make you meet the whole four, for your whole family, just for one person getting sick. So like you said, in your situation, an emergency for just you, it would be $2,000, and then you would have to pay...
20%.
20% up to $6,000.
Right.
Now, you're talking about the HSA, can I...
No, this is, this is not like that. The half one and two are embedded deductibles. So what that means is that if one person gets sick, they're only paying a single deductible, and then the insurance company helps you pay after that. Okay, but if two or more people get sick in the same year, or have an accident, you have to pay the family deductible. But with the HSA plan, if one person gets sick, and they have a family plan, they gotta pay up to the full $4,000.
And that was off the board anyways.
But, yep.
And what you're looking at is out-of-pocket maximum, that's not, for in the hospital, that's... All these percentages are into play before that. But after you hit the $12,000 or the $13,200, then the insurance pays 100%. So that's not what you're paying before you...
What does it say if it's 100% after that?
That's what he said. That's what it means.
Yes, after you hit your out-of-pocket max, insurance company pays for everything and anything you have to do for the rest of the year.
So again, the two is still, I mean, in my opinion, like the better deal. And even Mike's shaking his head. I know, we're not gonna quote you on half.
Anybody else see anything we're not seeing, or...
Veronica, Shannon?
I agree with Chris, I think that the silver two looks to be a pretty good plan. My question that I have is, we have the hospitalization and all that on here, but what about, like you were saying, like x-rays, CT scans, diagnostics, things like that? How would that all play into here?
Well, if you go to the, the doctor, you know, it's just routinely...
No, Mike, I'm sorry, they can't hear, can you go up to the microphone? I'm sorry about that, or do we have another microphone we can give them?
Yeah, I should. Yeah, if the doctor sends you to an outpatient, or anywhere after, out of the physician's office, or he orders more tests or anything, then, then you're gonna start going into your deductible. But if you go there, you know, and, and he can handle it there, and everything, and just write a prescription and send you home, you know, that's a copay, which, you know...
So if I have something that has to be monitored every six months, and I have to go in, and I have to have scans run, how is the silver two going to affect me?
I mean, it all depends on what the doctor orders and the type of procedures.
So there's no, like, percentages as far as, okay, you're...
Yeah, I mean, you'll, you'll, you'll start paying into your deductible. So you go there, pay an office visit, and if he orders more testing, or say he wants you to have a CAT scan, and you're going into your deductible, so you start paying towards that $2,000, if you need a CAT scan.
Is that the same for both, silver one and two?
Yes. They work the exact same way, except for the copays and the prescription drug, and the out-of-pocket. They work the exact same way.
So you would pay your office visit for your doctor, which would be the $40. Then if he orders a CT scan or something like that, you have to go to the hospital and have that done.
Then you start going into your deductible.
And the CT scan costs $2,000, then right there, you have to pay the full $2,000 right off.
Right, correct. Anything, inpatient, outpatient, hospitalization, you know, any serious procedures like that, you're gonna go towards your deductible.
Okay.
And again, it's both plans.
It's gonna be after the percentage.
I'm sorry?
It's gonna be after the percentage.
After what, what percentage?
Like you said, if you, when you had a procedure that was $2,000, there's gonna be a percentage off because you have insurance.
Right, I mean, there's a slight discount, but you pay whatever the bill tells you. The explanation of benefits you get, you pay that amount, it tells you to pay according to your benefits. It'll, it'll let you know when you make your deductible. You get an EOB, it's called an explanation of benefits, they send you. And they say, okay, your insurance covers this, you know, this is what the network provider discount is, this is what HAP's paying, this is what you owe by this date. It'll, it'll break it down for you in, in your explanation of benefits. And if you have a claim that, that you think is fightable, and, and you can send it to me, and I, and I'll be more than happy to, to service that and try and fight that for, for, if they make a mistake or anything. Because it does happen from time to time, and not very often, but, but I have come across claims with mistakes that have been, you know, turned back and corrected, and satisfied for me subscribing.
Okay, so that, I mean, that answers my question. That's what I wanted to know, basically, was, you know, if for some reason you had to have a CT doc or some sort of diagnostic testing, you're paying that right off the...
Yeah, this is every, every single, it's the same with your, your plan you have right now.
Okay.
Same exact thing we have, and we have a $20 office visit. If they were that, you'd be paying into your $1,500. And if they were one of those tests you're talking about.
Which right now...
Every single plan.
$7.50 from the township too, so wouldn't that, that would apply?
Right, I mean, that, that plan, I don't... Right, I mean, that, that plan, I don't think was negotiated.
So yeah, the silver two I think still looks good. But the other question I had was the co-insurance. Could you explain what that is?
Yeah, co-insurance, so it means after you pay your deductible, which is out of your pocket first, then you pay, and this is covered at eighty percent, that's what that means. So you pay twenty percent of the bill after two thousand until your twenty percent reaches out of pocket. So they're still paying eighty percent. So you're paying twenty percent after, let's use two thousand for an individual. You're paying twenty percent until that reaches the sixty-six hundred. So in all reality, that bill's going to be a lot higher than forty-six hundred dollars because you're only paying twenty percent of it. Does that make sense?
Yes. Yep, okay, good.
So it's got to be a pretty, pretty expensive procedure to, for, for, you know, sixty-six. Well, I mean, yeah, that's why we have the insurance.
Okay, so yeah, I mean, you want an opinion, I would have to agree, I think silver two is pretty good.
And if you look on this and it's across the board, it's on all of them, including the HSA. Preventative care is at a hundred percent. The insurance pays it. So if a mammogram or a colonoscopy or anything like that, it would, it would be covered. That wouldn't be paid out of pocket, it wouldn't go against the, um.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I know with the plan we, we had, we have had, um, we ran into, daughter ran into high costs when she had to have her gallbladder. I mean, they wouldn't even do it until she paid twelve hundred dollars up front. So even with the, the cream of the crop plan we had, they wouldn't take her in the door until it was paid. So, I guess it wasn't that great either.
Can I say something?
Yeah, could you come up to the mic please sir, so I can, so everybody can hear that.
I don't want to be on camera.
Or could you say?
Can I talk on the mic? Okay.
Well, give it a mic, someone's going to hand him the mic.
Oh, it's okay, it's okay.
I'm sorry about that sir, just because they couldn't hear over here before. I appreciate that.
Uh, before I, uh, got Medicare, I had a lot of procedures done, tests, hospitals, things. I never had that experience yet. The doctors would always say, can you make a payment? How much can you, how much can you pay? Ten dollars a month, twenty dollars a month? The same with the hospital. I had the same experience that they never turned me away. And, uh, I think maybe as long as you had insurance, they, they brought it. But, uh, I've never had good insurance, but they never turned me away. And it, you don't have to come up to two thousand dollars right away.
Now she had to pay the, that amount before.
Some of my friends did that too, but they, that's when they didn't have any insurance at all. But, uh, I think if you have insurance, it covers whatever percentage of it and you're willing to make payments.
They weren't even there for, it was ridiculous.
At some points too, uh, the hospital would ask for a big amount and I said, no, I just don't have it. And they would look at my records and then they forgave the bill. But, uh, but yeah, you shouldn't worry about them not taking you for emergencies or that. Or, or just turn up and get old and then you'll get Medicare.
Thank you, sir. Brian, do you have anything or Marty here? Anything you'd like to?
Speak now.
We've gone over the thing.
I gotta, I gotta have you come up, I'm sorry Brian. Thank you, appreciate it.
Well, basically we've gone over the same thing back and forth and there's no great plan here, okay? So it's going to be pick one and we'll have to deal with it. All right, I, myself, I'm only myself, so, you know, I pay so much and that's it. But I'm more concerned about the people that have families more than one person. So I want the best for them, okay? So I think everybody should think about what they're looking at and, you know, pick the best thing, pick what you would want for your family. I don't have a family, but everybody else does. All right, so I think your conscience has to take you there. But obviously they've worked this thing inside and out. There's no one's better than the other. You're only going to get what you're going to get. And they got you coming and going, believe me. Been there, done it. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, sir. Any other discussion regarding this? Would you like to say, would you like to say something?
As a resident in Lenox Township since nineteen sixty-something or other when we came out here, ten meetings, I'd like to applaud the board for the work that you guys have put into this for many hours. It's a tough, tough decision, I understand that. But I also would like people to know that we are, if I understood you correctly a few meetings ago, we are one of the few townships that offer hospitalization to employees. Is that right and wrong here? Didn't you call some place, some of the townships?
I think the only other one that I know of is Ira. I believe it was Ira. That gives insurance? And I believe it's the only other I.
I don't know what you're talking about.
Karen had a list.
There's met, the majority of, of McCombs Township gives benefits to employees.
There's also a lot of communities that are trying to decide. And as we read the paper every day, you see it right now in Baltimore. I sat with people from Baltimore last Friday and they are deciding whether to give it up totally or cut back drastically. Our mained township, the only ones that get, uh, they're, they're full-time firefighters. A lot of them, Bruce, I've talked to several of them in the areas here. Ray Township absolutely does not give anything. Now, right next to us, there's just a lot of them that are on the brink right now trying to decide what to do.
Right.
They're all put in the same boat and we all know that what we're going through here tonight, next year, we're going to go through the same routine again. So no matter what we do, as long as this is going on, these decisions are going to be out there. So I, I think we just need to decide on which one everybody wants and which works best for everybody.
And take it one step at a time.
And take it and see what happens in a year's time and then we'll decide next year again. Go through this whole routine again. This is very dis, it, it is a very hard thing to decide.
It is, and I understand the plight and I know a lot of these guys and they have for a long, long time. And I understand their plight. And I also know as a senior, mine just took a big hike. And they just cut that for my, uh, hospitalization, drugs, all that kind of stuff again. So we're kind of like all going through it, but I wanted to let you know and thank you guys for the work that you do. Do I will always give you credit for that and thank the board because I know this is a time-consuming thing. We're all in the same boat, so thanks for the work.
And I do stand corrected, we called in two thousand and thirteen, Ray doesn't have, Richmond doesn't have, Richmond Township, Ray Township, but the bigger ones, yes, and City of Memphis does, they're probably comparable to us. But if you go by the ones that are comparable to us, about half do, half don't, size-wise, in my opinion.
Can I tell you the majority of the, of the county gives benefits?
Right, and I think they're probably all going to go through the same thing that we are now.
Yeah, because you go like Chesterfield and Mount Clemens.
The money isn't there.
And the, the ones that, more, more of the ones that do offer it, like Chesterfield and Mount Clemens and Harrison, they're full-time union employees, a lot of them, that's a big difference too.
And I think if we had the businesses and we were, had the growth that they have.
We'd be able to afford it.
Yeah, we would, we would love it.
Again, it comes down to that eighty-five thousand dollars we were over last year. We, we have to consider that.
Marty and Jan, what do you think of that silver two? I mean, how does it look?
I think we want to compare it with silver.
It's, it's what you prefer, prescriptions or doctor's appointments, I mean, that's what it looks like to me. And just so the, the, those that aren't looking at the sheet realize, the HSA that we approved in either one of these halves, the difference in cost for the township isn't that much. It's well worth the extra four or five thousand we're going to spend. For the rest, those that use it tonight have to spend that four thousand out of pocket or two thousand.
I agree with that statement, but do you guys, do you guys have a preference or you don't care? Based on the two that we're trying? Do you have one?
No, we both agree.
All right.
And what about you? Does your take, what do you think of the?
They're both right there. I, I just know what, what we approved before, we couldn't live with it, for speaking to all the employees.
But what do you think of the two versus the one, I mean?
To me, I would get, doctor visits on my end, I would look at, um, for savings and the total cost of the plan. So for me, I would definitely lean towards one because there's not a huge difference and I look at total out of pocket cost. That's where I think it could impact somebody, um, income-wise, that there's not a lot of money to deal with. That's the way I would lean. But, you know, another statement I want to make too, um, Mike, I got to thank you for coming out as many times you, you have and dealing with us. Of all these years, we've never had somebody put in the time that you have with us and I really appreciate that. So I know we've been bombarded and it was kind of kill the messenger for a little while, but he's just given us specifics of the plan and really appreciate everything you've done for that.
The dental and vision, that's set, we don't have to do anything different for that one. Follow in, the HSA and this one, same?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just, basically that's for the board, we don't have to make another motion on that. You know, just follow, okay. It's, it's, in other words, you, we did that with any of these half?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the half PPO Silver Two insurance for employees.
Support.
Motion by trustee Boyd, supported by trustee Turchi. Any other questions or discussion? Jeanette, do you have something?
I'm just talking about that.
Okay. Other questions or discussion? All those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. Do you have a, Brian? Do you have a comment?
Um, still need the employees to decide about the dental, which plans they want. Either the plan, I'll let Michael talk about which two plans. But there's two plans that the employees have to decide on because they can take full hundred percent premiums.
Do you have a recommendation, Michael?
I do have a recommendation. I recommend Plan B. Um, it's closest to the plan you have now and it's the more affordable plan. Um, so for preventative services, it's, it's a hundred percent. Like you have now basic services, which is fillings, uh, fillings, extractions, it's, it's covered.
Employee pays for that themselves.
Yeah, this isn't, this isn't.
That's what the township, the township.
Yeah, the cost of all, so, um.
This is employee out of pocket, so the township does not pay for the dental vision.
Employee can take it or leave it.
Don't we only have one that takes that, that uses it? Oh, there's more than one? Okay.
That's the employee's discretion, if they want to pay for it, they can pay for it.
Right, that's why I wasn't sure if it was necessary to bring it up at the meeting because there's no out of pocket cost for the township. But, um, we only have one vision plan that's available because Blue Cross Blue Shield will not let you keep the dental and the vision if you take away the medical from them, um, which is rightfully so. I mean, that's where the ball, the premium comes from. So they're not going to let you have dessert without any dinner, so to speak. But, uh, the same co-insurances, um, and a bigger network is actually available to you through this plan. Um, the premium prices are the only difference. Um, but with the Guardian, it's a straight single couple family rate and with the, uh, Blue Cross Blue Shield, it was based on your age. Um, that's how they did everything. Guardian is an A plus company and it's the same co-insurance as when you go to the dentist or.
So your recommendation was Plan B?
Yes, there's, there's only one, uh, there's only one.
Any discussion regarding that?
Mine are numbered, you mean Plan Two.
Plan Four.
Four, Plan Four. She, she, sorry, she wrote the top of her plan, I think.
Thanks.
Are you satisfied going with Mike's recommendation? Do you need a motion regarding that?
I don't think we do because that's not.
See, that's, it has to be picked for the employees.
That's between, yeah, that's up to the employees to talk about their.
You said they ought, we ought to get the same one, correct?
Right, they all have to be on the same plan, whether it's, um, Plan Two or Plan Four. So they, they can't pick.
I think it needs to be specified then.
I'm, I'm thinking that too because if we go to each one of them and say, you guys talk about it, figure it out, it, it could be a battle.
I, I think it needs to be specified that this is what's offered, do you either enter your own? Do you use it?
Um, no. I did have visions, but I can't, I'm not paying.
I agree with Ron, I think probably go with what's recommended by Mike.
Those two people on dental.
You want to make, or make the motion?
Is that what it's called, Plan Number Four?
Yes, that's what it's labeled because there was an option.
Okay, I'll make the motion to go with Plan Number Four for dental and vision, it's both the same?
With the Guardian, yes.
With the Guardian. For those, those employees that choose to use it.
Motion by trustee Boyd, supported by clerk Keith. Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. Okay, was that Jeanette on that, is that?
Yeah, the only thing is I have a form that everybody taking medical has to fill out, right?
Correct.
And all that. Just for the record, Michael, um, notifications given to all our employees and when's it enacted?
Uh, three, three one will be the effective date of, of these plans, March, March first.
Okay.
So the, there should be plenty of time for you to have your cards, um, before that day. We should have all the paperwork finished up early next week. Uh, as long as everybody gets their enrollment forms turned in, that's the only thing we need from the employees is, uh, enrollment forms, which includes, you know, name, address, the, the social numbers. Make sure, uh, everybody's identified, is on the plan. And then anybody who'd like dental, they should have their enrollment form. Uh, and then the rest is just, um, township paperwork and we should have that done early next week. So, uh, anybody that who is, um, would like the insurance, please get with Jeanette and fill out the paperwork as soon as possible.
Thank you very much. Any public comment?
The public is through. I would like to thank Mike also for putting through the paces here and I appreciate what you've done for us. As Ron said, we've never had a representative come and talk to us and help us with it. I know we've been trying on your nerves since then, so. And I also, um, as Mickey said, it is a difficult situation to sit up here and try to do what is right for not only our residents, but the people that I work with here. We are a very small group, we're like family. And I appreciate that some of the people that had problems with this actually came, called my home and came in my office and spoke with me. And even though there were people that were dissatisfied, there were some that was very appreciative of what we were doing as a board and they knew that we were having a struggle. And I appreciate the fact that you, you came and you talked to me about it and that you do appreciate what we are doing, even though I know sometimes it's hard and some, yeah. I thank you very much. Yeah, thank you, Mike, for, especially for tonight, because it clarified step by step everything.
And just so everybody knows, our final decision going from the Blue Cross Platinum, which is what we had and what we would, we had to renew that and what we chose tonight, save the township forty-five thousand dollars, almost forty-six thousand. And I know I'm always talking dollars, but that's why I'm up here.
Make a motion, Judge Yer.
Support. You have anything, sir?
Just so we don't come back in another two weeks, Ron.
I think we're running out of time for the, uh.
Motion by trustee Turchi, supported by trustee Boyd. Any other questions, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, meeting adjourned.
Thanks for coming out.